Hi Christine. Oh, Leslie, I just got a text from you, but it looks like you're in OK. How is everyone?
Good, you?
Doing well, doing well.
Just feel like the Brady Bunch.
All right, let's see. I think we have everybody, do we have everybody to get started at least?
Let's see. Yes, I believe we do.
OK. All right, and you're recording, right?
It's recording.
Perfect, OK, we're gonna go ahead and get started, so I will call the meeting to order, so I'll call the meeting to order at, let's see, what is it, 6:32, and I'm going to actually read the, the explanation of remote meeting regulations first tonight, just before we open the public hearing, just so that we have those on record before the public hearing starts. So I'm just gonna go through the checklist to ensure that meetings are compliant with the right-to-know law during the state of emergency. So as the Chair of the Grantham School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. And folks can find the information for how to access the meeting by Zoom or by telephone at www.gvscox.org. We are providing public with notice of the necessary information for accessing the meetings, and so we gave notice to the public of the information for how to access this. And it's also been provided at that same email address, or same website, www.gvscox.org. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. So if anyone has a problem accessing, they can call 603-863-9689. And we will adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. But looking at the participants list, we already have some public who is accessing the meeting. So we'll assume that at this point, all of that is working correctly, but if anyone does have an issue, they can call the number that I mentioned. All of the votes tonight will be taken during the meeting by a roll call vote. And so we'll start the meeting by taking roll call attendance, and each member will state their presence, and also whether or not there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. So I'll go first, so Brittany and I am the Chair, and I am here, and there is no one currently in the room. All right, we'll go to Christine next.
Christine Conroy, and there's no one else in the room.
OK, Jody?
Jody Holgesek, Vice Chair, and there are no other humans.
Leslie? All right, we'll give Leslie a second, and Denise?
Denise Sullivan, and no one else is in the room.
OK. All right, and we do have Leslie with us, we'll see if we can have her.
She's saying her computer's frozen, so.
OK.
Leslie, do you want to type it into the chat?
Looks like she can't right now, so we'll see if, when Leslie joins us and is able to either roll call herself, but we can see her, and she is here, and it looks like everyone that's participating in the meeting right now is through Zoom. We don't have any phone attendees, so hopefully everyone is able to see that Leslie is here.
And I have no one in the room, sorry about that, I have no idea what happened.
No problem, we're glad, we could see you, at least, we knew we could see you. All right, um, OK, perfect, so we'll move forward, and we're gonna open the public hearing to accept the supplemental public school response funds of $200 per student from the state of New Hampshire. So Sydney, I'll let you go ahead and introduce that.
Sure, at several meetings over the summer, I had talked about how schools have been keeping some pretty active lists of requests that they wanted to make for FEMA funds, specifically for things like, for us, it would have been all of our PPE for our tents, you know, all of those other kind of things, cleaning supplies that we needed unexpectedly because of the pandemic. What happened was originally, all the FEMA funds were repealed by the government, and what they decided to do instead was to allocate $200 per student, just straight across the board, across the state. So basically, they take our October 1, 2019, average daily membership of 449 students, times $200, which gives us an allocation of $89,800 for the Grantham School District to help with very specifically COVID-related expenses. The other thing is, and Karen, just, I want to make sure I have the date correct, is that all of these expenses have to be incurred, like in-school incurred by December 30th.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, it just, I just realized, did the $200 each for middle and high school students have to go to Lebanon?
So it's, I've reached out to Lebanon to discuss that, and both Karen Lazard and I have reached out to sending districts across the state. And sending districts are actually doing very different things. So there are some sending districts that are not sending it to the receiving districts. There are some who are asking the receiving district to itemize the expenses that would apply, in our case specifically, to middle and high school, and then prorate it, for example, by four months, because it ends in December, and then also by the percentage of student population that is Grantham students, that's another way that people are doing it. And then a third way that people are doing this is covering their own expenses, and then if they have remaining funds, sending them to the receiving district. So I've reached out to Lebanon to go into discussions with them about, about how, what their thoughts are on that, but we don't have a definite answer yet. The first step would be for us to accept these funds on behalf of the Grantham School District.
And so we are in the public hearing now, so, you know, we, we do see that we have some public participants in the meeting, so if there are folks who have either, you know, comments on the acceptance for, of the district of these funds, feel free to post in the chat or the Q and A, if you would like your comment read, we do need your name and address as part of the public comment. And so just a reminder there, and then just for the board as well, like Sydney just mentioned at the end, what we're discussing now is the public hearing to accept this money, and then in our first part of our agenda, we'll be accepting that, that money, and then we can have, again, we can have a further discussion of what that looks like in terms of distribution, or some of those exact questions that Christine, that you brought up. So other conversation in terms of pertaining to the, the hearing part of just formally accepting this money from the state.
I, I do have one question kind of going off what Christine asked, if we get this money, can we give, is there any catches that we couldn't give it to the sending district, I mean, to the receiving district?
No.
And my understanding, and Sydney, correct me if I wrong, but that question did come up for the state, and their response was a, yes, you should decide that.
It's, it's a, they did it the New Hampshire way, and they said that's up to each local district to determine. That's why when Karen and I called around to other sending districts, we got a wide variety of answers of what's happening.
It just seems some kind of sharing of that resource is reasonable.
OK, any other questions for the public hearing to accept this money, questions or comments? OK, and so at this point, so we'll take the vote to accept it in our, in the full board meeting. So at this point, we will close the public hearing, and I don't, we don't need a motion to close that, do we, or do we need?
I would, since everything is roll call vote, just to err on the side of caution, I would just do a quick roll call to close the public hearing.
OK, so we need a, a motion to close the public hearing? So, OK, so we have a motion from Christine, and we need a second?
OK.
A second from Leslie, and we'll roll call closing the public hearing, so Christine?
I.
Jody?
I.
Denise?
I.
Leslie?
I.
And Brittany, I. All right, so we'll go ahead and move into our agenda, so I've already explained the remote meeting regulations. So we need to approve the agenda, so are there any changes or additions to the agenda? And Sydney, I had one quick question, we do, on the agenda, we have the second reading and adoption of the JH addendum, do we need to add that as an agenda item?
Yes, policy should be on there, thank you.
Yep.
So I have one other change also.
All right, so we'll add J, we'll add a policy. So for action on that JH addendum that we went over at the last meeting.
It is at the bottom of the agenda.
Yep, we just don't have it as a action item.
And then I am going to make a, an request to remove D, the Grantham Energy Group Discussion. I heard from Andy Gelston this morning, and he said that he just feels like there's too many other things going on, and he really just wants to gauge the board's interest in the community power purchasing, and it can wait. So he, he said he'll get, he'll get back to us at probably a more appropriate time.
I think that's perfectly reasonable and appreciated, we have a lot of other stuff to talk about, so thank you. Anything, any other changes or questions on the agenda? OK, so we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
OK, we have a motion from Jody, and we need a second.
Second.
We have a second from Christine, and we'll roll call the approval of the agenda as amended, Christine?
I.
Jody?
I.
Leslie?
I.
Denise?
I.
And Brittany, I, all right, so our agenda is approved, and so we'll move into our public participation, and just a reminder for our public in this format, if you would like your comment or question read publicly in the meeting, we just need you to include your full name and address, as, just as we would if we were having, taking public comment in a board meeting, we would have you start your comment, just identifying your name and your address, so we have that for the record, so if you are providing a public comment through the Q and A or the chat, just please do include your name and address. And so we'll just give a few minutes, we'll give that, like I say, we need that little, like, someone's typing icon as we're waiting to see if any comments come in. All right. And feel free, if folks are typing in a comment or a question, feel free, I was just gonna take a minute just to recognize and thank the board and the administration and the teachers who are able to, who are playing to come to the meeting for being flexible to go back to this format for our meetings, I appreciate it, and it was a, a tough decision, because I want to just recognize and acknowledge that I know that there, there is a little, can be, and rightly so, a disconnect between the board meeting virtually and remotely while asking our teachers and our students to meet in person. But I think this is one of the measures that we can take to help make, to mitigate the risk for some of our teachers and administrators, especially as we move into our budget season, when we're asking different members of the administrative team and teachers to come into the meetings to discuss parts of the budget, putting them in a situation where they're, again, at another in-person meeting with less measures of control over who would be present at that meeting, felt like it was asking folks to take an additional level of risk that wasn't necessary, and could potentially then impact staffing, which would wind up potentially causing some, could potentially cause some kind of a closure in, in ways that we're trying to avoid. And also, just, and I had a conversation with a couple of the board members about just wanting to honor and recognize the fact that the administration and the staff has done a really great job and made the hard decision to have the closed campus, where we're not having folks come into the building for other reasons, to volunteer and to do things like that. And part of that is, you know, modeling and recognizing and honoring that the board has another alternative to meet in this sort of format, rather than sort of breaking that seal of the closed campus. So just to thank you guys for the flexibility to be able to move back to this remote work for folks. And I also, and I know we'll get to it later in the agenda too, but I also have heard that we've had more parents and community members join us as subs, and I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to those folks, because that is, you know, one of, that's a huge commitment and a huge step towards helping us be able to keep doing what we're doing. So that's my, that was my vamping to give more time for folks if they had a public comment to make. So we'll move into our discussion and action items for tonight. So we do, we'll finish off the public hearing that we started earlier, and this will be the action to accept the supplemental public school response funds of $200 per student from the state of New Hampshire. So if there are board members that have more thoughts or discussion on the acceptance of that money or questions, and certainly we can continue the conversation about, you know, what happens with that, that money.
I have a question. I don't know if I'm unmuted or not. OK, Sydney, hi. Just wondering if the middle school or the high school, those funds, would it be wise to retain part of it for Grantham, so that if we incur any expenses in Grantham for those students, but not in Lebanon, that we still have some in reserve?
Yeah, I think that's definitely worth consideration, because we are still only, well, I was gonna say we're only halfway through the year, but these funds actually only go till December 30th, so we would have to be anticipating that something would be needed in the next month. Which could happen. I can tell you, there's a lot of different ways to think about this, and, and as I told you, we've heard a lot of different things from sending districts, and I did reach out to Dr. Roberts and Tim Ball yesterday, their business administrator. I haven't heard back from them yet, so, you know, that'll be a big part of the conversation, because we don't know exactly the expenses that they've had to incur up there in the middle and high school, you know. But I can tell you that with our expenses, and I know Karen will jump in here if I'm off with the figures, but with our expenses for just what we've done, in addition for COVID, we could use all but about $14,400 from expenses that we've already absolutely had to incur in terms of PPE, the tents, the additional staff members that we just hired, because we hired two additional paras. Remember, it doesn't cover them for the whole year, but it covers them from when they were hired through December 30th, and all of those things, so if we're looking at what we have incurred just for Grantham School District, specifically GVS purposes, it is, we would just take, we, we would look at that $89,800, and we would have about $14,400 left. Now, that doesn't mean that that's what you would be interested in sending up to Lebanon as the receiving districts, that's totally up to you. If we do it by the average daily membership dividing the schools, we would keep about, it's about 45, average 45, 46,000, and send almost an equal amount up to Lebanon, if you did it strictly by the $200 per student, which would mean that anything over that amount would have to come out of the general budget. How'd I do, Karen? OK.
If, if, do we have to make a decision on that now, or can we see what Lebanon has to say and then come back to it, or how, how does that need to happen?
Yeah, you don't have to make a decision about it right now, the only thing that you actually have to act on right now is, is just accepting the funds for Grantham School District, and we can continue these conversations with Lebanon later. Because again, one of the other things we heard from receiving districts, and I don't know if this is true from Lebanon, but we'll find out, is that, you know, for example, Lebanon got approximately $230,000 in their allocation, and some districts have had trouble actually spending that, and some of it is because they need things such as, you know, infrastructure kind of things, for example, additions to their HVAC systems, which actually just can't take place by December 30th, because all of those companies are swamped, and they're busy, so there, again, I do want to hear directly from Lebanon, but there are some districts who are having trouble spending the funds by December 30th, I just don't know where they are. We could ask them, as some other sending districts have done for, you know, not a very detailed, I wouldn't want to do that to them, but, you know, some kind of itemization of the costs that they've had to incur at the middle and high school, and that could give us some more information too. And I don't want to put a ton of extra burden on them either to, to get, you know, a nitty-gritty itemization, but I'm sure they have a very good idea of what their additional COVID-related costs have been.
And Lebanon received money for the average daily membership just for their resident students, yes.
Not, not for?
Not inclusive of?
The sending districts' students.
Right.
OK. Well, I think we ought to keep things open as to how we share those funds. One of the things that occurred to me looking over the expenditure report for tonight was to get a handle on, so how are we doing with all the extra expenses we incurred because of COVID? So it's good to hear that these funds will help in that effort. But probably be good for us to have a good handle on where we stand with that before we negotiate with Lebanon about this $300 per student.
I am confident that we have spent everything but $14,400 of that allocation. So the question would be, the question really is, do you want that to be the dividing line, you know, or do you want, you know, do you want another method for deciding on how to share the funds?
Well, it did occur to me that, that these protocols, the, the COVID protocols are gonna have to be in place probably for the remainder of the school year. We're pretty close.
Again, yeah, and one of the other issues is that this is only through December 30th period, so, you know, for example, one of the things that we are in pretty desperate need for, that we thought we could wait till next year, but probably can't, are iPad replacements for the iPad minis, because they're just not, they're not handling the remote things as well as we need them to do, and you know, that's something that, for example, if we order now, and if they come in, they would actually have to be here by December 30th, bless you, then, then that would be something that we could use that money for, if not, and if we buy those, it has to come out of the general fund.
Sydney, is it likely that we'll have another allocation after December 30th to get through the rest?
There's talk at the federal level of some kind of other package coming out, but the word is that, you know, that'll all be decided by the new administration, so I'm not really sure about the timeline of how quickly that might trickle down into a local school district.
I wouldn't count on it for 2021.
Do we have any expenses that we've had of that amount that you mentioned that we know could be identified as specifically relating to middle or high school students? Or have most of the expenses that, or all of the expenses that we've had that are COVID-related been for GVS?
From what, from what I have seen, and again, Karen, jump in, it has been GVS-related expenses, so the big thing with the, the big thing with the middle and high school would have been transportation, but we negotiated with the bus company to, you know, for a while, they weren't going on Wednesdays, but at the same time, we got them to add a third bus, you know, so we worked that through negotiations where it doesn't actually change our bus contract, which worked out well for everybody. But Karen, can you think of anything in particular that directly went towards middle and high school expenses?
Nope, the only thing I was thinking was that monthly bill we're getting from the bus company to clean the buses, but that's benefiting our GVS students as well, so it's not specific just to middle school and high school, it is benefiting them a little bit, but, and it's not a huge amount of money either.
Yeah. Yeah, the other thing that we've heard, that both Karen and I heard from some of the sending districts, is that their, their feeling was also that if the receiving district had to pay out of their general fund COVID-related expenses, those are other things that our students aren't getting, that we're paying tuition for. You know, that, that's another way of looking at it too, is that if, you know, what has been cut in other terms for, you know, in other areas that we're paying our regular tuition for. So again, as I said before, there are many angles to view this with.
Do we have to provide any kind of documentation, like of the expended, you know, the expenses of those funds that, that would indicate that those funds were spent for those students? Or is it just, like, well, we have to show, you know, that the, the amounts that we received for certain, you know, grade levels benefited, that those expenses were towards those grade levels?
No, the only thing that we'll have to document is that they were directly related to unexpected COVID-related expenses.
OK, any other questions or comments from the board? So just to sort of confirm and summarize, it sounds like, you know, before we take a motion on this, it sounds like, and feel free to, to correct or amend this, any board members, but what I'm hearing is it, sounds to me like folks are in favor of a motion to accept these funds with a conversation perhaps next month, looking at potentially dividing or distributing some of those funds to Lebanon, pending a conversation that Sydney or Karen might have with Lebanon in terms of what their needs are, does that track with folks?
But we had to do it this month.
Except, we'll do the motion to accept them this month, but then move the conversation about potentially distributing or, you know, sending some of that money onward, we could, we could have that conversation next month. Oh, OK, so it doesn't have to happen?
Oh, sorry, has to be spent by the end of this month though, right?
Yeah, we can take care of that, no problem. But I mean, and then you can decide, you know, later on, what you would like to do with the distribution to Lebanon, and we just have to take whatever, but whatever expenses we can't cover, will have to come out of the general fund. but whatever expenses we can't cover, will have to come out of the general fund.
Yeah, it seems like we wouldn't be able to make a decision on that without knowing from Lebanon if that's something that they would even, like you said, if they, you know, would, if there are districts that aren't even going to be able to accept that, you know, additional funds because they can't spend them in time. And if it looks like we need to make a more immediate decision about that before the end of the year, we could call an emergency meeting for if it seemed like it was, there was an imminent decision that needed to be made.
Karen, I don't, um, I don't think there's any deadline on when we would have to make a distribution to Lebanon, is there?
No.
Okay. So at this point, what we would need is a motion to accept the supplemental public school response funds of two hundred dollars per student from the state of New Hampshire.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Denise and we need a second.
Again.
The second from Leslie and we'll roll call. Christine?
I.
Jody?
I.
Leslie?
I.
Denise?
I.
And Brittany, I. All right. So the motion passes. And we're moving on to student school board liaisons. And so we have our student school board liaisons plus, um, Sydney brought forward, uh, to the board materials for a new liaison from the middle school.
Yes, I'm very excited and I'm going to move a few of our panelists over and make room for our school board liaisons. And then I will move people back when we get to the other parts coming back.
Join the Brady Bunch screen.
Exactly. Okay. So first I'm going to move in Seth Carl, who's been here before from the high school. And I am very excited to introduce Mariana Utel, who is our brand new Lebanon Middle School School Board Liaison. There she is. Hi. Welcome.
All right. And Sydney, do, does the board need to do, um, an official vote tonight to, um, bring Mariana on board with us?
Yes, to officially appoint.
Okay. All right. So maybe we'll let Seth go ahead and if, if there's anything that you would like to share with us or questions that the board members have, um, for you, we'll go ahead and do that first and then, um, the board will do its official appointment. Um, and, and then we'll hear a little bit about how things are going at the middle school. So Seth, how, how's the high school? How are things going? Is there anything you'd like to share with the board? And then maybe some board members might have some questions for you.
Yeah, so, um, this week, uh, there's a new, um, kind of like schedule, um. You might not have heard, but there's like Wednesdays are going to be remote now. So tomorrow will be our first time having remote Wednesday, which is what people wanted from the very beginning of the school year, but it's finally happening now. And it's kind of like a time for kids to check in with their teachers and just have a reassessment because they don't really have that in the schedule anymore. Because of like the need for quick buses and just getting everyone out of the school so they can clean. So that's kind of the, the biggest thing. Um, and besides that, I think uh, everything's been pretty good. Besides, I know there is a something with the middle school, but I'm sure Mariana can tell you about that.
All right. Any questions or comments from board members for Seth?
Can I ask a question even though I'm?
Yeah.
Seth, um, do you think a lot, most students will opt to take Wednesdays at home?
Yes. Yeah, I think so. Cause unless like you really have questions, um, most kids will probably just stay home so they can sleep in and I mean, do classes online. So that's pretty, a nice little break in the middle of the week.
Any other questions? Okay, um, so Seth, I don't know if you've had a chance to, to, to stick around or to see it all, but one of the things that the board is working on right now is um, our, we're going through our budget hearings and, and each month we look at a different part of the budget. Um, and so I was thinking, I, I think the board would probably love to at some point either next month or, um, you know, as we get to the end in February of our budget process. If you, and I certainly don't expect you to do it tonight, I'm just going to launch this out there. So you have a couple, you know, a couple, a month or so to think about it. Um, if you have any thoughts from a student perspective, or if you hear from any of your, um, you know, your, your school colleagues about what you see, um, the, where the, the value of our budget should be. And one of the things that, that people talk about is that a a budget is a value statement of an organization. So our budget shows where our values lie. And it shows, you know, the, the areas and the things that we put money towards or that we earmark money for, um, indicates what we value as a group. Um, and if you have any thoughts or if you have any opinions about how our board can give examples of what we should be valuing and the way that we put our budget together. Um, and what you think are areas that schools should, uh, rethink how they distribute their money to better show their, their values as an organization. I think that the board would really love to hear that. Um, we all come at our budget from a different place as, um, adults who are managing, uh, our budgets of our own lives and our worlds. And I think it would be great to hear from you, um, at some point, you know, next month, if you felt like you had thoughts on that, or even in February as we bring our budget process um, to, uh, to that next step. Um, if you have thoughts that you wanted to share with us about, but our budget as a document, um, that, that demonstrates and shows our community what we value. That would be great.
Okay. So for the budget, I know that you guys pay like a certain amount so we can go to like the Lebanon schools, but is this like on top of that to kind of like help the school district itself?
Yeah. So our budget, so like for instance, last month we looked at the parts of the budget that talk about, um, our buildings and our facilities. Um, we looked at some of the administrative areas, so like running the school board, our administration. Um, this month we're looking at, um, areas of like special education and like psychological services and speech and audiology. Um, we'll look at areas of technology in the budget. Um, different things like resources for teachers in terms of what they can buy for materials for their classroom, field trips. Um, all of those different areas are parts of our budget that we have to look at. The big pool of money that we have, how much of it are, can we put into each of those areas? And what are the areas that, you know, are costing us the most? What are the areas that we can save some money on? What are the areas that we need to put more money towards? Um, and those things change every year for us. You know, we've had years where we've needed to put a lot of money into technology because we've had worn out equipment. Or years where we've had to put more money into the school building because we need a, a black stripe painted on the roof so that snow stops falling on the cars. Um, you know, things like that. Um, and, and so that budget is a living document for us that we're always looking at. Um, and if you just from the student perspective, have ideas of, you know, this is something, these are areas that students could really benefit if there was more money resources.
Yeah. Well, I mean, two things I can think of straight away are, um, the, the buses, uh, we never seem to have enough buses, which is why we have to end school a bit earlier, I think. Cause just to get kids home. So then the next bus route will come in and like for sports too. I know it was tight in the past, but now with, um, meaning like double the buses for like away games and such, it's, it's even tighter. And I know, um, that's always a, a big thing that, uh, seems kind of like it's getting worse. Like there's less and less bus drivers as they get older and retired because a lot of them are, um, older and more at risk. So that could be even more prone to retiring. And then just, I think we have a lot of great teachers and I know I don't want to take away from that because I want that to stay the same, but just the building itself as always, I mean, it's, it's pretty old. So I mean, if you could just save like a little bit um, each year and then it won't seem as daunting to the Lebanon taxpayers. I don't know. Cause it's always like, oh, they want to redo the school again. Nope, that's, that's too much. And it's like, I mean, if you put it like that, yeah, it, it does look like a lot. Cause there's always like little additions that they want to add. But it doesn't, like they wanted to add the auditorium. Uh, and I think they are, but like, it's just the little additions, I don't think add to the quality of the school as much as like just renovating it. Cause our, um, our heating and like our airflow aren't that good or aren't like up to standards. Like I don't think we have like good HVAC. So we have to leave all the windows open. And I mean, that's probably like a standard thing, but I, I, I think that could be improved upon.
All right. Thank you. Yeah.
All right. So for the board, um, our next job is to officially appoint Mariana to our, as our third, uh, school, our student school board liaison. Um, so any discussion about that? Or would anyone like to go ahead and make a motion to appoint um, Mariana Utel as a student school board liaison?
I just wanted to say that Mariana, you had me with the hamster story.
Me too.
Yeah, I wanted to say that too. I, I loved your application. It was wonderful. Thank you for all the time you spent on it.
I, I might've had a dog if I had your PowerPoint when I was a kid.
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Mariana as a school board student liaison.
Right. So a motion from Christine.
Oh, sorry. I'll happily second the motion.
We have a second from Leslie. So we'll take a roll call. So Christine?
I.
Jody?
I.
Leslie?
I.
Denise?
I.
And Brittany, I. So welcome aboard, Mariana. You're officially a, a student school board liaison. We won't put you on too much of the spot and I won't ask you for your thoughts on the budget process at your very first meeting. Um, but if you have anything that you'd like to share with us just about how things are going for you so far this year, I know the middle school is in a little bit of a flux week. Um, but if there's anything that you think that the board, um, should hear from you at this point, we'd love to have it.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm really excited to be here. Um, of course, the biggest thing right now is that a staff member tested positive for COVID nineteen. And because of that, we are one hundred percent remote until December ninth. And we're supposed to go back on Wednesday, December ninth, five days a week. I'm not sure if that will happen, but that's the plan for right now. And so far things are going well. I don't have any concerns or recommendations. I think that the way that the school is handling this is good and that, that's all I have.
And before this week, were you, um, I know some students at the middle school have been doing remote learning, but were you in person at the middle school?
Yes, I was in person.
Other questions from the board?
How is it going so far, Mariana?
I think it's going well. What we were doing before we went remote this week, whereas we had cohorts that we would go with each, for each classes, we would go with the same people. There would be no intermingling between other cohorts. So that way, if somebody did test positive for COVID nineteen, it would be easy contact tracing and that way we could, um, contain the spread a lot easier.
Was it hard to pivot from being in, in person to remote or did it happen pretty easily?
I think it was a pretty smooth transition because we started off as hybrid. So we already had that remote schedule in place and all the students had already been familiar with the remote plan, how to go into Google meets and how to check things on Google classroom, like so on and so forth. So I think it was a pretty smooth transition.
So how do, how do you and your friends, um, react to the fact that there is a teacher who's tested positive?
Um, well, of course we were all wondering, oh, who could it be? You know, because we're all nervous that it could be in our team if we were in close contact with that staff member. But, um, once we found out that we were not in contact and we didn't get a call from the school about being in contact, I think we were all pretty calm. And I think we all understand that things like this are going to happen. Especially, you know, being in school five days a week. There's not, we're, we're doing an okay job of social distancing, but of course there's times when there aren't any social distancing measures in place. So we understand that things like this will happen and I think we've been pretty calm about it.
Excellent. All right. Well, I will just say, um, we really, really appreciate you, uh, putting your name and your application forward to do this with us. It is a huge step to have so recently just been a GVS student to now be joining the school board. That's an enormous um, step to take. And so we really appreciate it. And hopefully before the end of the year, we'll all be able to get together um, and have you guys come to an in-person meeting at some point when things are safe for us to be able to do that and folks are comfortable doing that. So, um, we really appreciate, uh, you joining us and we'll have, I'm sure we'll have more questions for you as we go on. And, and I think the board really just appreciates the opportunity as we think through some of our agenda items that we talk about each month, um, to look for opportunities to get input um, from you, from all of you as, uh, as students. To help us not just take the adult community member perspective, um, into consideration, but also um, the, the perspective of our, our students. So thank you both. All right. Feel free to stick around for as much of the meeting as you can possibly bear. We're going to be very exciting talking about very, um, hot topics. Um, but we won't make you stay on our Brady Bunch screen as we, um, move on. So thank you guys and we will hopefully see you next month.
Thank you both.
All right. So we're going to let Sydney shift our folks around and, um, okay. So our next agenda item is revisiting the request from last month from Grantham Rec for, um, use of the gym for winter basketball. And so Sydney is bringing Emily over now. It's fun. It's like we shift some people in, some people out. Um, all right.
Camera's not working. Sorry, I'm here. Hi, everyone.
Hey, Emily.
No worries. All right. So any, um, questions or additional discussion from the board for Emily?
Um, I, I just wanted to say, and I don't know if anyone else's packet was this way, but I don't have the full letter from the, um, I have sections missing on my letter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It printed weird. I think it's there. I just think it's all strange.
It was like the first few letters of each line were missing.
Yeah. So may, maybe Emily could give us a little bit of a, a review of, um, what's been changed and how things look now.
So when we left the discussion, um, last month and we'd said a lot can change in a month. So that is very true. Um, we had sort of left it that I would put information out there saying, is there interest? Which I did immediately after we had that meeting. And just for numbers for you guys to know, I wasn't expecting an overwhelming amount of people to be rushing to playing an indoor sport. Um, but just so you know, specific numbers that I did get, there were seven fifth and sixth grade boys. There were three third and fourth grade girls and there were two fifth and sixth grade girls. No one from the younger classes. Um, so it, it's not, it wasn't an overwhelming majority of people by any stretch of the imagination. And I also do understand that we're living in a different climate than we were a month ago when I brought this forward to you, thinking that, you know, we had a very successful soccer season and we're trending well and let's forward to you, thinking that, you know, we had a very successful soccer season and we're trending well and let's give this a shot. But you know, that's not the case right now. So, but I did want to come back and follow up and say that those are the numbers that we have, have received.
Thanks, Emily. I, I want to jump in a little bit first, Emily, and thank you so much and for getting that information and also for being so understanding. Um, we did talk about this at our progress monitoring committee meeting and uh, the general consensus of that group with the rising cases was that um, as much as we want these activities for kids, it really is not the right time to recommend something like this. And um, I was also just informed of today's case numbers in New Hampshire. If you haven't seen them, it's 772 today. Um, so it's, um, we're really still on the rise. So my, my own recommendation unfortunately is going to be that this is just something that just wouldn't be wise at this time.
Yeah. And I, I have no, I have nothing, no response to that because I, I agree with you.
Yeah. And there was, um, also at that, at the progress monitoring committee meeting, there was sort of this, um, uh, initial conversation of pretty unanimous, um, folks, you know, saying not supporting that. And then it sort of immediately shifted to, but we also totally would support helping to, um, you know, support if there were other, uh, outdoor, you know, rec activities and ways that the community could um, support, you know, you, Emily, and trying to put together, you know, other alternative, um, things, you know, in terms of like skiing or snowshoeing or whatever the case may be. Um, there was definitely just from, yeah, just from that group, like immediately folks were like, can we help do other things?
Yeah. Yeah. We definitely, you know, it's thinking outside the box, which we all do now. Um, but there are some things we have that we're trying to finalize and get information on. Um, and just for, if you hear anything, I've put it out there, but our activities are all too different this year. And we are not, we can't do breakfast Santa. We can't do the tree lighting ceremony, but there's a bunch of other things that I've put out there that are all distance, yet still partaking in community, which is what it's all about. So hopefully people will be open to doing something a little differently, but still feel, feeling that they are taking part in a community activity, just individually. So that's all.
Are there other questions or comments from the board before we, um, take action on this request?
Just the, the other thing, Brittany, is that you, as a board, you also have the option of taking no action.
Yep. So typically, um, as we head toward that, that point, if there aren't any other questions or comments, typically we do try to phrase, Sydney always reminds me, cause I always try to do this. We do try to phrase our, if we do have a motion, we try to phrase it in the positive. So if we did have a motion for this, it would be something along the lines of a motion to approve the use of the GVS gym for rec winter basketball. Or as Sydney said, we can also, do we vote to take no action?
No, you, you would just basically say, is there a motion? And if there isn't, and if there wasn't, or takes no action.
Yep. That's what I thought. Yep. So, um, just a reminder in terms of procedural stuff for the board. Um, so any other discussion or conversation about this?
Let's hope we can do it next year.
Oh man, me too.
And thank you, Emily, for coming forward. You know, I know that you came forward in the midst of this craziness and didn't really know. So thank you for taking the time to do that.
Of course. Thank you for listening to the proposal.
Okay. So do we have a motion? I'm watching all of your little red microphones to see if anybody is gonna unmute themselves to talk. Okay. Not hearing a motion. Uh, the board is taking no action on the request for, um, basketball use from Grantham Rec. And we are, I will say, at the end of that, we are also, um, here and, um, excited to help Emily, if we can, with other activities or things that, um, might come our way in the new year. So. And I'm planning on jingling all sorts of families in town. So. All right. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you so much, Emily.
All right. Okay. So our next agenda item, I don't think we have to shift any people around for, we have everybody we need here for it. So our next one is the second semester tuition. Um, for the, um, accelerated on the accelerate online academy, remote academy students. And we have a memo, the board has a memo from Sydney in our packet. Any other additional info you'd like to give us for that, Sydney?
I just wanted to give you the numbers from the first semester. So, you know, we had a lot of shifting going around at the beginning of the year and a little bit more shifting for students. When we, uh, moved from hybrid to the four person all-in. So the, we had a, I had originally asked the board to allocate up to $25,000 for the accelerate online academy. What we wound up spending is $18,528, which is a combi- combination of $17,100 in tuition and $1,428 in workbooks. Um, that's where it came and it's, um, there are four courses that each student can take and not every student is taking all four courses. So it's really dependent on the number of courses that each student is taking. So with this, I believe that the board would be safe in allocating up to $20,000 for the second semester of accelerate online academy. If anybody, um, at this point decides that they would like to go remote, um, in our remote academy, Velax now has openings again, um, in elementary. So we would recommend that anybody new starting would be able to use Velax instead. And, but we also, I would recommend that people who have started with accelerate, ha- have the ability to finish with accelerate. You know, it seems to be working well for the families who have taken that option. And, um, personally, I wouldn't want to ask them to switch midstream.
Sydney, have our numbers changed with these students since, um, the four days in?
We had four students change, um, with the, with the four days in. Uh, one student went to a private school and three students decided to go to, uh, remote or the online academy. Kristen, is that, I mean, there may have been some changes after that that I don't know about, but I remember at that original juncture, we just had those four changes.
That sounds right.
Okay.
Well, I, I think it's really important that we let these children finish what they've started. And I think that this is definitely something I support.
Uh, we have been able to cover this amount with our grants that we've gotten. Um, between the CARES Act and depending on what you decide about the $200 per student, this is something that would be eligible for that because it is a directly, we wouldn't be doing this if it weren't for COVID.
Would we pay it before December 30th, the, before December 30th?
The second part of the tuition, I'm not really sure. I would have to work that out with the company. We wouldn't have enough. We wouldn't have enough with the funds you just accepted for the whole, you know, that would, the 20,000 would be beyond it. But, um, we basically encumbered a second semester tuition in our figures for the year because we, we were forecasting that this would be coming.
Have we heard, what have we heard from the families using the program? Our family is finding it successful or positive?
So the majority that I've heard is positive. There are some families who decided to drop certain courses, like I said, because for example, reading wasn't working out for one of their students, or they found something better that they could access on their own for science. Um, but I believe there's only, and again, Kristen, I'll ask you to jump in. I believe there was only one family that started this that then, and then changed to come in person. Because they weren't, because they weren't happy with it specifically. So go, maybe Mrs. Reed can go into more detail.
I believe you're right. I was just going to agree that I think most families that I've talked to have enjoyed accelerate online. I think there are a couple that it's, it's iffy or they don't particularly love it, but online learning, remote learning certainly isn't for everyone. Um, I think that's something we've all, we've all learned in the recent past. Um, so I think that's completely understandable, but for the most part, for those people who remote learning is, is their thing and, and it's what they're gonna do well at, they, they're enjoying the format.
Yeah. And it's also for the majority of these families, just, um, the best available option to them because they have other health concerns at home, you know, where they, where they aren't comfortable sending their kids in. So, um, it may not be the absolute perfect scenario. And, and I'm sure that a lot of the kids in AOA would be coming back to GVS as soon as, um, as soon as they feel that it's not too much of a safety risk for their, for their household.
Absolutely. We get a lot of emails from parents saying they just can't wait for their kids to be able to come back and for the families to feel safe with that.
The classes that are, that students are in now, do they end at the end of the year? Then they'll be in new classes in the new year? Or are there classes that like continue over?
So they're divided into semesters. And so we have some students, um, typical, uh, GVS achievers who have already finished their first semester. So, um, there, I've had some communication from parents who are anxiously awaiting the board's decision tonight to see how quickly we can get them signed up for second semester so that they can keep going.
Okay.
And, um, while we're talking about this, I really want to give a, a huge thanks to Lauren Luce, who is our remote academy coordinator. And she is the one who is the, um, direct liaison between these families and GVS and communicating regularly with both me and Kristen and making sure that these families are staying a part of our community. So thank you very much to Lauren.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Otherwise we will, um, need a motion to approve, uh, the second semester tuition for the accelerate online academy, an allocation of up to $20,000.
So moved.
Second. Okay. So we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. And so we'll roll call. All those in favor, say aye. Christine.
I.
Jody.
I.
Leslie.
I.
Denise.
I.
And Brittany. I. All right. Thank you. All right. So we'll move to our next agenda item, which is, uh, we have another memo from Sydney and it's the proposal for the holiday vacation schedule change. And this is another action item for us. Um, so Sydney, anything that else that you'd like to talk us through from that memo from this request?
Um, this really, there's been a lot of talk about, uh, the stress, the anxiety, you know, as an educator right now. And, um, I will say that I know that this is only two days, but two days, I think in of those particular two days is especially with a combination of some increased anxiety, to be honest, and fatigue around the holidays, you know, so what we would normally have, but very heightened. Um, the increasing cases are not helping with, you know, with, uh, people's daily um, mental health and, and stress. But I think those two days would go a very long way to helping people have a break. Um, to take care of themselves, to take care of their families, to really have some separation, some unplugging time. Um, I will ask Mrs. Reed to jump in a little bit today because, or now, because today she was talking a little bit about how we've, what we thought we would see after the Thanksgiving break that are, that we're not seeing.
Yeah. So I mentioned this morning that I really thought that coming back from Thanksgiving break, we were going to see um, a decrease in anxiety. Just people have had, had the opportunity to, to take a break, to unplug, to, to take a step back. But in reality, the last two days, I've seen a lot more anxiety, um, a lot more stress. And I think part of that is, it's, um, nothing in particular, but it's the layering of everything. The increased cases, the, um, staff absences and, and trying to find subs and juggling staff around and the inconsistency. The student absences and, and trying to juggle teaching and remote and getting kids their, what they need. It's the holidays. It's the change in the holidays and not being able to see the loved ones that everyone expected. There's just so many layers that keep getting added on. And it's definitely in the last two days, I've, um, seen an increase in the stress and anxiety in the building.
Yeah. And we've asked a lot, we've asked a lot of everybody in our community. Um, but I, I do believe when we're thinking about what we've asked of our educators and how amazingly they've done it, I, I would really love to see them just have, um, something that feels like more of a complete rest. Um, as you saw in my memo, we are still well within meeting our instructional hours for the state for the year. We wouldn't have to apply to any, for any waiver of any kind. The other thing is we still have, um, plenty of hours that would be built in for inclement weather, snow days, but at the same time, you know, we have the new system with snow days where if I let everybody know the day before that it would be a remote learning day, then it could be a remote learning day. So there's, there's less risk of losing those instructional hours because of weather this year than previous years.
I'm absolutely in favor of this and just the way the calendar works when the holiday falls. It's two days, but they also will have that weekend as well. And that'll be a free weekend rather than a weekend thinking about school the next week. So, um, I absolutely think we ought to amend this schedule.
I feel the same as Christine. And when I heard that Hanover gave those couple of days to their teachers, I felt so bad that we didn't do that. So I'm glad we're doing this now. Thank you, Sydney.
Yeah, I agree. I think this is something we should do. Um, definitely. I think this added time will, will, you know, that will give them four more days. That's, that's a half a week. I mean, that's really extra time and really well deserved.
I know we like all of our instructional time, but I have to also imagine that those two days are not super high learning value days. I imagine it's a lot of, um, managing very excited children.
Yeah. And I'll just piggyback on what Kristen said about like the last couple of days that I think this period of time between Thanksgiving and Christmas is probably going to be the most excruciating mentally for all of us because there's nothing regular about it. I even think especially elementary school age kids, like making sense of this, basically, I can't think of a not nice, you know, not terrible word, but really hard world that they're in. And I, so I'm Kristen, I'm not surprised that I think this period of time is really, really hard for everybody.
Yeah. And Kristen, that brings me to the next question. Is there anything as a board that we can do to support you or Chris in helping the children and the, the staff, um, with the added anxiety and worry and stress?
It's a great question. And it's one that we talked about today and in our meeting that I'm, I can't think of anything. I mean, obviously this would be a gift and it would be, the two days would be, I think make everyone feel appreciated and, and loved and kind of be able to take a breath. But in terms of the daily, day to day, I don't think there's anything any of us can do to, to peel off one of those layers to make things easier. I wish there was because I would definitely jump right on it, but I haven't been able to think of anything. Like we put chocolate out, but that doesn't quite do it.
But I do honestly think this will help.
And I have one other question that actually pertains, um, to the students. I know that we help, um, with the luck, with food during breaks. Um, would that, would additional resources be put towards that for those extra days that they will be provided lunch?
We, um, I'll work with food service, but right now we only, since we went, uh, four days back in person, um, we have fewer lunch deliveries. And so it wouldn't be difficult to get them to them on that Monday.
That's a great question, Jody. Thanks for bringing that up.
Um, I'd also like to chime in that there are probably many staff members as well as, um, GVS students who have siblings home from college. And what a nice opportunity to have that extra time together as families to, uh, not have to worry about the school schedule in there.
I've heard about lots of returning, um, siblings and college students who have who have been locked away in, in attic rooms to fulfill their quarantine. And so just around the time, they'll let them out. They can let their sibling out of the attic and then they can all spend time together. All right, any other questions or comments on this from the board? I think this is a great um, conversation and a really good, uh, Sydney had, had um, run this by me a couple of weeks ago. And um, I think this is a great come, that this conversation with the board is a really good example of um, what we're trying to do to support our, our teachers. And I just really appreciate everybody's support for this and, you know, the, the thoughtful questions and the, the comments behind it. So we would need a motion to accept the proposal for the holiday vacation schedule change, um, which would give us two additional vacation days of Monday, December 21st and Tuesday, December 22nd.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Leslie and we need a second.
Second.
A second from Christine and we'll roll call. And so all those in favor, please say aye. Christine?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
And Brittany?
Aye.
All right, thank you all and thank you, teachers. We just appreciate you. Hopefully this lets you have a couple more days of deep breaths and um, a couple of days to not have to think about exactly how you will manage very excited, holiday excited, a Monday and Tuesday of um, very excited younger people. All right, so our next agenda item is our next set of budget functions. And so the, those budget sheets were included at the beginning of the board packet. And so tonight, we're looking at special education, psychological services, OT, PT, speech, audiology and vision.
And I'm moving in a few more people for this.
Excellent. Hello, oh, we filled our, we filled our Zoom, on my screen, we filled our Zoom square.
So we have um, Madeline Prudhoe Burke with us, our Special Education Director.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, oh, sorry, I'm talking to myself. Okay.
There she is. And so we are going to, I'm just gonna let Madeline take it away by function. So we're gonna start with the 1,200 function for special education.
Okay, now I'm just gonna say Karen, if I misspeak, will you jump in?
Sure.
Okay. So there have been some changes. Uh, we, we have had several conversations about this and there, there have been some changes. Um, you can stop me anytime. And then at the bottom of the first sheet, I will talk about the, the difference between last year and this year and um, where those, where those dollars directly go. And also let you know that some of them are negotiable and some of them are not. And the first one, which is special education um, instruction, that number has jumped. We uh, anticipate that we're going to be losing a seasoned special educator to retirement. Um, I, I know that she has not yet submitted her retirement uh, letter, although she's been clear with everybody that she will be retiring and anticipating that. Um, and the need that we had this year, and that need was compounded by uh, two things. One was the um, the new children that enrolled in school and the need that followed them, uh, or that was part of their um, educational need. And the fact that um, it was, although our numbers are not high, it was disproportionate to uh, the level and the severity of need that was needed by some children enough to create some stress on the system that in this number is also um, the potential for a part-time special educator. So we anticipate that there would be um, a special educator probably hired at less of a rate and then um, some room in there for someone to provide, yes.
We haven't included that. We haven't included that yet, but we do have that seasoned teacher's salary in there. So I think if we hire somebody at a lower rate, then we do have some wiggle room there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so who we hire will have an impact on if we have an additional need as well. And we did have that conversation. And the special ed director, I think that's just a natural um, increase. Um, the van driver, that's a sub, that $250 is in case we have a need for a sub-van driver. Um, you can see that um, well, I guess we haven't had much of a need this year at all. Not yet, right. Not yet, she says.
Knock on something.
And then special education summer tutoring. You'll see that there's a, there's a variation in the number there. Um, both what we budgeted, what we spent and what we're asking for. So this year, you know, because of COVID, we did some very interesting things with um, summer school. And we opened up summer school to a wide variety of children, not just special, children eligible for special education, but children at risk of maybe losing skill. Um, with uh, significant regression for what we thought was going to be a typical start to the school year that wasn't. And so um, when we're looking at that $15,000, we're looking at children who have demonstrated in the course of the year regression, recruitment needs and/or emergent skill. So that is only special education and we looked at it in a typical way. If summer school happens in a typical way, which of course, we don't know that yet. Um, paraprofessionals, um, I think Karen, we added, uh, did we add another person in here?
Two, it's two extra positions in there, yep.
Right, so the, the board had asked us to make sure we took into account if we needed things, should this pandemic continue into next year. Those two paraprofessionals are the two that we just hired. Um, as of the um, as of, I believe those were voted, those were approved at the October meeting, I believe. And so we did leave those in there. There is always the option that you would want to take them out, thinking that we will not be in pandemic mode where we would need those additional two people again. So again, no crystal ball, but that's, that's what those two additional paras are.
And really, I have to say, and Kristen can jump in here because she has direct everyday experience with this, that reality is, is that uh, there has been a strain on the paraprofessional staff. Uh, some of that has to do with uh, just what happens in the course of a school day, a school week, a school month, a school year. Some of it really has to do with the way we had to maintain social distancing. And um, that had, that has created it um, a different challenge and you can't do without the extra staff. I will say though, we did take on some children this year um, as part of the Grantham Village School Community who were um, um, and we did not anticipate that we would, that there would be that level of need. Um, we don't anticipate that they're leaving and so we anticipate that that, that need will continue. And that wasn't planned for last year. Um, the next one is the behavioral interventionist, speaking for itself. Um, special education preschool, preschool is doing so well. Oh, just had to say that. It's amazing. Um, and then all the rest of those things are the typical things, the typical functions uh, that you are obligated, what are the, it's buyout insurance, uh, dental. You can read down that list yourself. And I, I think the only place that I had a question, Karen, was the jump on uh, the New Hampshire Retirement System, which went from 40,003, 44 to 56,701.
Yep, the rate uh, changes from, it's 17.8% this year for teaching staff and it goes up to 21.02% next year. So there was a pretty significant increase in both the rates for teachers and for employees.
I guess when we talked about this previously, I didn't, Ed either didn't notice that or didn't answer the question. So thank you, because that was a pretty big jump.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the only other place um, in that shortlist right there that you're going to see is special ed contracted services. Um, we budgeted 10,000 this year and I'm requesting $8,000 for next year. That would be the place where um, we're holding funds for something that doesn't fit in a typical function and object code for a contracted service. It doesn't fit under OT, it doesn't fit under PT, it doesn't fit under vision or audiological. And those things, it doesn't fit under psychological and those things come up. The truth is, you could put $50,000 in there and you would know, you might spend 55. You could put five in there and only spend 2,500. It is child dependent. Um, almost always that money is related to a, a specific student need. Um, I think that we had a really heavy year of evaluations this year and I don't anticipate um, that that need, I think we've, we've anticipated the need in other function and object code lines. So that's why it's a date. Um, we don't have, we've taken out all of the preschool contracted services and related services because those were um, historically part of the um, transition to our schools preschool. Those were services that we were paying for as part of a contract with another school district. And all of our, 99% of our services in preschool are integrated. Um, the van driver.
And that's actually the van lease.
Oh, that's the van lease.
Yeah, I'm gonna change the description on that line.
All right. Um, the next one is special education tuition and you're gonna see it went from nothing to $80,000. And this is certainly something that the board can consider and should consider, whether to include or not include. Uh, I am anticipating that there is a possibility that we will have a um, elementary, special ed elementary tuition cost next year. I am working very hard for that not to happen. And um, I don't have a magic wand, so yeah, I can only do so much. Um, I, you don't, if the money isn't, I'm not guaranteeing that we're going to use those funds. Uh, that $80,000 comes from a specific um, is, is specific to an anticipated possible placement. Um, that's the cost of the placement. I um, it may not happen, so you may not feel like you want to keep it in there. So that's just something that I want to say.
Just to let the board know that um, obviously if you choose not to keep it in the budget um, and if it does happen, uh, that would be a place where we could go into the special education trust. If, if we, if we don't know that this is for certain. Um, and then it comes up after this budget is approved, then you may have to go into the trust for that if it's not here.
Thank you, Sydney. That's absolutely true. The other two places that you're going to see, and this was a fairly significant rise. I'm assuming Karen, uh, the next one is special education tuition private at the secondary level. And it's tuition and it's residential. And the way New Hampshire does it is they get separated out. So you pay for school and then you pay for uh, the child living at the school. They're separate and that's, that rate is set by the state. So Karen, the last time we talked, I didn't see those numbers in there. I'm assuming you got next year's rate.
Um, we don't have the rates next year yet, but we were basing that on what we're paying this year.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Uh, and then special edu- education travels down to 500. I said it could be nothing because I'm not going anywhere. But I mean, somebody insisted on putting 500 in there, that I might go somewhere next year. I mean, that, whoever, you know, I'm not saying me, I'm just, I can't believe I just said that.
I heard it loud and clear.
You're all brainwashing me.
It's working!
It's working. And then this year, we didn't, you know, we were really concerned about spending money. So when you look at expenses and um, special education equipment in particular, there were a couple of items that were purchased and those items were purchased student-specific. We did not really spend anything. Uh, we have a couple of outdated um, um, educational protocols for testing that you're not supposed to use them when they're outdated and out copyrighted and the new addition has come out. So I'm anticipating that there will be a little need there and I do think we'll actually use those funds. And then the dues and fees are for the uh, West Central Special Education Group, which I never attend because nobody else does. It's just um, stuff to pay. Any questions about that?
I actually do have a question. Um, going back to the 80,000, um, I know you're working to try to make that not happen. Is that something, like what does the timeframe look like on that? Is that something that a switch can be flipped or is that something decisions are made in the early winter? Like, what, what generally does the timeframe look like on that when a decision's made for that type of outplacement?
Well, there are a couple of factors that would, I think it's a great question. There are a couple of factors that would play into that. I would never do that independently and a parent can't do that independently. It comes out of an I, of the IEP process where a parent might reject um, IEP services and, and/or the IEP placement. And then it's my responsibility to follow what the law says about um, trying to mitigate that to a solution that works for everybody, that's reasonable, measurable, doable and fiscally responsible. And so that's why I said, you know, it, it's my job to try to mitigate that if I can. And I am working on that and I'm not saying that it is going to happen. So one thing is the IEP process. The other thing is that a parent could parentally, any parent could parentally pla- place a child of theirs that is on an IEP. And if they notify the school within a certain timeframe, um, then the school is in for a fight about tuition. Right? Is it our obligation to pay for that or not? And there is a legal process associated with that. Now, if the parent doesn't notify the school, they parentally place and then they don't notify the school and a year later they say, oh, by the way, I want you to pay for this. There's not a lot of teeth in that for them. Um, yet the goal is always, I mean, sometimes you have to, you have to enter the legal arena for certain things, but the goal is always not to do that. And so in this situation, that's my goal. Um, if it isn't there this year, I do anticipate that it would be there next year. For reasons that of course I can't discuss with you. So on that bottom line, you'll see that there's a difference of about um, you know, the difference from 1,330,000 dollars and um, 1,183,000 dollars, which is 147,000 dollars. If you took the 80 out, um, you're, you're now talking about 67,000 dollars that.
I was doing a quick calculation in that if we took out, if the board chooses to take out the 80,000 anticipated and the two additional paras, the special education function as a whole would be up by just about 10,000 dollars.
Yep, I did the same thing. I came out with a little bit more than 10,000. Yep. And those are your variables and you have, you know that you can exercise that about putting them in or keeping them in or taking them out. Any other questions on that page?
Um, I have a question about um, the logistics of taking out two paras. Can you talk a little bit about how that would impact the quality of education that we can offer our students?
You know, I, I don't know, honestly. I just stumbled a little there because the truth is, are we back to what's the old normal? Or are we, are we part of the, is it a hybrid of the old normal and the new normal? You know, I don't know. I, I think there really, honestly, there has been a stress on the system related to the numbers of paraprofessionals and the, the way in which we were able to allocate them. And even though I think that Kristen did a phenomenal job and continues to on a daily basis, sort of massage that and pivot and replace people and it, it is, it's, it's not, it hasn't been good. There's been a strain on the system and it feels like there aren't enough people to go around relative to paraprofessionals. I think if we could go back to the way things were prior to COVID in the assignment of paraprofessionals related to IEPs, one-to-ones first and then reassign them to classes, we might not need those two paraprofessionals. I, I, I can't anticipate what the fall is gonna look like though, because I didn't think we were still gonna be here. That wasn't much of an answer, was it?
It was good.
It's the truth.
Very authentic answer.
That's what I got.
That's definitely the reality in terms of, we just don't know what the fall is going to bring and where, where we're gonna need people and for what purposes.
Yeah, and the growth that children have made also.
And we also, if we keep our um, the numbers, I mean, we have our, our student population number is so much bigger than it was last year. And that's one of the areas that, you know, when we have an increase in numbers of students, then we see some of these, these are some of the functional areas that we see start to increase. numbers of students, then we see some of these, these are some of the functional areas that we see start to increase. You know, being as far over 200 students as we are is pretty significant.
Yeah, and don't forget, we started in this hybrid model. Some classes had seven children, six children. How we, how much easily, more easily it was to handle the instruction and then you flip it, now everybody's there and all children are combined, right? And so it, it just was, it was a lot. It was a lot. I think it's remarkable what the school has done and I, and I have not heard one paraprofessional complain and I find that amazing. So that's, you know, that's, that part's pretty easy, I think. And then the last one was psychological services and that's basically exactly the same. That's based, it's a contracted service. It's totally based on the need for psychological evaluations, the part of the evaluation process that's reevaluation and initial evaluation that is done by someone outside of the school. The school staff does academic testing. Everything else is done through a contracted provider.
Any questions on psychological services?
And the next page is speech.
And you'll notice can I ask just a quick question on the psychological services and we may not have an answer to this right now. Do we have a sense of what the, where we are in terms of actual, what the actual budget for this year could look like? Cause I, I know that that's an area that we've really been looking at and you know, have we seen an increased need in that budget area? Cause I know for the last three years, we've asked for the same amount and the last two years have come in, you know, under that the actual has been under that approved amount. Do we have a sense of what this year's actual will look like?
I don't know if Karen has any current information, but I will say that I wrote myself a note here because I thought that there might be a question about this. Yeah. So because the evaluation is, it's part of a three-year evaluation, we need somebody for the psychological portion of that. And any children who are referred, new evaluations, new move, children who move in from an out-of-state automatically need new evaluation because they have to be made eligible in the state that they're currently living in. And when you look at all of that, we had a, we've had a very lopsided year, very heavy on the psychological services the first half of the year, really through the middle of November. When you look at the second half of the year, I'm anticipating three evaluations. So I can't give you a really clear answer because I think it's gonna look really lopsided in part because of those things. And we've also taken in, we've had three brand-new referrals, so you add those to the list as well, not counting the new children. So I think it's gonna be in the ballpark. Unless something crazy happens.
Like a pandemic?
No, just crazier than that. A pandemic on a pandemic. So speech. You'll notice that in the requested budget, everything is blank except $98,000, which is contracted service. So we did something different this year. You know that in Grantham, you've historically owned as a staff person, your speech language pathologist. And I swear I didn't have anything to do with this, but you went through a lot of speech language pathologists since I've been here. I didn't, I didn't railroad them out. It just was a coincidence. And our last speech language pathologist, Tracy, left in June, maybe even the end of June and we all administratively decided that it would be better if we did not look for a speech language pathologist under the circumstances. We were a little fearful that we A, wouldn't find anybody or B, would maybe not find someone who we really wanted to hire. And so we worked with Boothby and we worked out, I think, a really good deal with them. We have a speech language, language pathologist who, if you didn't know it, wouldn't know she was part of the staff. She's really blended in beautifully and doing a really nice job. She is now getting her clinical hours and so Boothby is paying for the super, the clinical supervision, which is actually would be an enormous expense to us. I spoke with her today and I know that she's only interested in staying with Boothby because of the clinical support that she's getting and it's going to help her to get her three Cs and so there's no, we don't have to stay with her, but the, the, the the plan that we made with Boothby has really worked out. And, and we're under budget as a result. So I'd like to recommend that we stick with that. Any questions about that? Okay, OTPT. So we have been using at the school, you all know this, a certified occupational therapy assistant for a lot of years. And I am very pleased with how things went this year. I think they could have gone a couple of different directions. And I'd like to recommend that we continue with the Coda. So everything there is what's related to, you know, what's related to having an employee. Except PT and OT contracted services. We, that money is twofold. One is that anytime you have a, somebody with a legal assistant at the end of their name, whether it's an SLPA or a PTA or an, or a Coda, there has to be clinical supervision. So we are getting that as a contracted service through Boothby. That happens once a month, so that is part of this contract. And then the other part of this contract is occupational therapy that is directly related to evaluations because our Coda can do some evaluations, but not nationally normed ones. That has to be done by an occupational therapist. And in addition to that, some is direct service to a very few children. Because our Coda does a great job, but we have a couple of children who are seen by the, the OT and then we have some children being seen by a physical therapist and that is also a contracted service. I think the number's legitimate. I don't anticipate going over that number.
This may be a question for Karen. Under OT supplies for 2021, there isn't a figure for approved. Did we have a, a budget number for that last year?
No.
Okay. And so was that something that we just, we didn't need this year and we will need next year or?
Right.
Okay.
I actually had supplies in every area because really people have asked for things that I said they couldn't have. I mean, I do think there are some things that people need. I shouldn't say it like that. And if they weren't essential, they didn't get them. And, and I think everybody understood why. There are some outdated materials and so especially in the speech area, for example, all of those things are now included in next year's budget. I think that's a real need and I think it's a need here too. Lots of that is, is consumables for OT. Next one is vision services and you'll see that there is an enormous jump between, oh no, that's the wrong, I've got the wrong one. I was thinking about audiology. Vision contracted services are the same. The contract is the same and the service is going to be the same. Why did I go in here? Wait a minute. Sorry. And those are services related to an IEP. And the last one is audiology and you'll see a huge difference there. The difference is the approved budget for last year was $65,000. And this year we're requesting $25,000. So what happened there was the contract was with an agency for the deaf. And I guess I shouldn't have just said that. I said it out loud. Sorry.
It's okay. We don't know who you're talking about.
Okay. And, and the contract was, it was something I was arguing with them about all year long. And they were charging for things like whether the person came to work or not, they got paid. They got half their daily rate for travel. It was a whole bunch of things. And, and so I was chipping away at that. And then toward the end of the year, I notified the organization that we were going to pare down the contract to just the essentials and hire someone ourselves to fulfill the role that they were charging us a significant amount of money for. And so now we're only paying for a small portion of that service. And just so that you know, I am also looking for somebody else to contract with and that should bring that number down to closer to 15,000 dollars if I'm able to do that.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. You're looking for someone else instead of them? Or in addition to them? Okay.
No, instead of. Yeah. I'm not necessarily unhappy with the service as much as I am unhappy with my inability to negotiate for the service. Anything else?
Any other questions from the board on these areas for the budget?
I just wanted to mention that on these sheets at the top, it says 2021 requested budget and I think it should be 21, 22.
Yes, I saw that myself, Christine, and I have fixed it in the spreadsheet, so the next time I print them out, they'll be correct. Sorry about that.
And I just wanted to make a comment about the provisions in the budget as you discussed it with us for those special education potential expenses. I feel more comfortable having them in the budget rather than falling back to the reserve funds.
Sydney, would you, I know previous years we've had a sheet for, I think it's the February meeting where we have a sheet of like potential areas that we've identified through this process that we could pull. And could we make sure that we have some of the things that Madeline talked about tonight? Like that 80,000 on that sheet, just so that we're, when we're trying to rack our brains and remember what we talked about back in December, we remember that, you know, that was one of the areas that we had looked at as a potential pull from the budget.
Absolutely. And the other thing I was gonna say to Christine's comment is if you have them in there, even if we don't know that it's gonna happen, if you have them in there, that it could be something if we don't need it, it just gets returned to taxpayers at the end of the year.
Yeah, I was thinking similar to Christine and exactly what Brittany said is I think it's nice to have that list so if we do find that we have to make some cuts, we know all the areas that are possible. Yeah. Yeah, and I think when we do that kind of big picture look at the end of this process and we're, we're weighing those like, okay, at one point we were talking about, you know, snow, snow blowers and tractors and then a different time we were talking about, you know, contracted services. And then we can look at some of those moving pieces and balance which ones, you know, which things can we pull, which things can we put back in? You know, any of those that we looked at tonight that are potential areas to pull out, just it's good to have those on the list.
And just before we finish this, I do want to thank Madeline for everything she does for all of these functions and especially for all of our kids in Grantham that she takes very, very good care of and looks out for them and looks out for the district. She's got that great combination.
Oh, thank you. That's, that's great. Well, you saved my life by giving me something to do during COVID because I, otherwise I might be a mental health statistic, so thank you all. Know what I mean? It's been glorious.
And we heard you tonight for when we're back here next year with you.
These, these people, they're driving me crazy. I find myself saying, well, next year when we, I'm like, what the hell? What the heck?
We heard it.
Yeah, I know.
It's like when, when Ariel signs with that flaming pen that she's gonna give up her voice. I think speaking it out loud at a board meeting means you've, you've signed with your flaming pen that you'll stay with us forever. All right. Any other questions from the board on the budget, these, this, but these budget functions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Madeline. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate your help on this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Our next agenda item is the area agreement discussion.
Okay, so as you all remember, we completed our area agreement negotiations last spring, early summer. It recently came up from all, all three districts. As you remember, share Drummond-Woodson as an attorney. And the attorney's office brought up the fact that they would be interested in, they would recommend actually that we make the area agreement as amended more formally approved. And the recommendation from Drummond-Woodson is that we actually have state board approval for it. So it's, it's optional for us to have state board approval because remember there were four or five areas that would trigger an automatic state approval. For example, if we changed the grade levels that were there, if we added another district, those kind of big things. We didn't do any of those things in our negotiations. However, it's their recommendation that it would really solidify the agreement and to do that with the state board prior to putting it on our warrant articles. So the basic process would not be very complicated. So what this would entail is that we would take the agreement draft as we have it. We would hold a, an area board. So at least three representatives from each district, so nine people, an area board public hearing later this month. And then after the public hearing, that board would vote to move it forward to the state board. The state board would meet January 14th to give its approval and then approve the warrant articles that would go on our ballots. And we were gonna put a warrant article on anyway. So it would basically be taking the step of having this process formalized by going through the state board. What this would do in terms of a timeline, not for the approval process, but in terms of the area agreement, is that this would set, reset the three-year clock that we would not be able to take any action to make a major change for the first three years of the agreement. So I think you probably all remember that that was originally in the agreement back in 1967, which means that we met that three-year criteria in 1970. So what this would do is this would mean that at least for the next three years, there would be no major change to the agreement. After that three-year period, it would, you know, anybody, any district could make any changes that they wanted. So it's obviously up for your discussion. I think it's probably a good recommendation, especially off, after all of the work that everybody put into this negotiation. And if you did want to do it, then what I would need is three of you to commit to being on that area board. It would be December 17th at 5:30. And it would only be a one-hour meeting because Plainfield meets at 6:30. And you know, they have their hard stops. So 5:30 to 6:30 on December 17th. But it's obviously up for your discussion if you want to go through this formalized process. If you choose not to do that, then basically what would happen, like if we choose to do nothing and just put it on our own warrant article and not go through the state board, basically what would happen is the agreement would have, would basically have less teeth to it. And it would be a year-to-year agreement as it would be if we hadn't gone through this negotiation, negotiation process.
Have Lebanon and Plainfield decided, are they in favor of doing, have their boards discussed this?
So we met as a group with the attorney today and we just happened to have the first board meeting. But I can tell you that Lebanon and Plainfield both feel as if they would like to move forward at this point without being formalized by their boards. Because this is kind of what everybody expected to happen with the agreement. I mean, anyway, we, we put in there a sign-on for a 10-year period, which everybody knows the 10-year is basically a gesture, you know, that we intend for this to be a long-term agreement. But what this would do is this would lock us into the first three.
So I have a question. I remember what
So I have a question. I remember one year when the state reviewed it, there was wording of something wrong and it got pushed back to us. What if that happens again, would that stop us from putting it in as a warrant article?
Well, I think we'd be safe because the state board meets once a month. So if they get it on January 14th, our attorney doesn't see anything that would be a red flag for the board. But if anything did happen, we would still have February, you know, to have something go forward and then in time for March for our annual meeting.
So can we put in the warrant article even without the approval, like if there was a window that was too close like that?
Yes, we can. Because we would, we would essentially have been planning on doing that anyway.
And then I guess my last question is the expense of this would be something I assume would be free ways?
Yes. Yep.
Other questions from the board about this or other thoughts, other preferences, one way or the other?
I mean, basically, I don't think it's a bad idea unless anyone feels as if you were planning on making a change within the next three years.
I don't think, I don't think we're anticipating that, a change within three years.
I just feel like after having gone through this process, why would you want to? You don't want to rewrite it? And it does still go out. It does still go out to our Grantham voters for a public approval. Which I know that you've all known or wanted to be a very important step. So that still will happen.
I would be in favor of it and I would be willing to, are available to be on that, the area board.
I assume it would be a Zoom?
All Zoom.
And how many meetings, Sydney?
One, only one meeting for one hour. December 17th.
I can do that.
Yeah, December 17th, 5:30 to 6:30.
I'm not sure I can make that meeting. I think I have a medical test that day and I know it's going to be uncomfortable.
Okay. So we have Brittany, Denise, and do we have one more?
I'm not sure I can either. I'd have to look because I know I have two doctor's appointments that day as well.
I can.
All right, Leslie.
All right.
Hey, you don't um you don't really officially have to take any action right now unless you would like to, because the official action would be from the quorum of you at the area board meeting on the 17th.
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay.
We'll be there and let, you know, let us know if the, the other boards move in a different direction.
Okay.
All right. So our next agenda item is the principal job description. And the job description is in the board packet.
And this is one of those job descriptions that you read and you think it should come with a cape, you know?
Or, or you should, it should be several people stacked on top of each other under a cape?
Yeah, but as we've discussed before is when you are in a one school, one district situation, the, the roles wear many hats and the principal role especially. I don't know if you've noticed that, Mrs. Reed, but you wear many hats.
Any questions or comments from the board on this job description?
I'd just like to say that any, any principal who is all of these things, Kristin deserves to be tired. Thank you.
Well, I, when I read it, I said to Sydney, it's a good thing that I took the position before I read the job description.
And did this, this job description had input from the committee? Is that or not? Yes.
So this, the job description really needed to be updated. And so this was a process of one, just putting it into our new template with some of the legal things that are now required. But two, going through the principal search committee and also using the feedback that we got from focus groups and from the community survey, from the principal search, community survey that went out. So it's a compilation of all of that to really hone in on what we really believe the GVS principal job is.
And I have to tell you, I'm part of that committee and they really are doing an outstanding job and they're just a wide range of people. It's, it's really a wonderful committee.
Yeah. It is. It's great. And we, I'm really pleased with the survey that we reached so many people in the community who don't have kids in school. That was a real testament to getting some really authentic field, feedback from everyone in Grantham about how important this position is to the whole community.
All right. Unless there's more discussion or questions about it, we'll need a motion to approve the principal job description. So moved. Right, we have a motion from Leslie.
Second.
Second from Denise. And all those in favor say aye. Christine?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
And Brittany, aye. All right. So our next agenda item is the second reading and adoption of the temporary addendum to policy JH. And that was in the board packets actually after the progress monitoring committee minutes. So it was after the, to the principal's report and the superintendent's report. And then after the minutes, there's a copy of that. That addendum. And we discussed it last month. And I had a question, Sydney, about, because this is a temporary addendum. Do we need to put any kind of a date that this would expire? Or would this be something that the board would have to take a vote to rescind?
You would have to take a vote to rescind because it's a policy addendum.
Okay.
Sydney, I have a question too, um, about the, do we have, do you have any flexibility with the window of time that we're offering? I think it says up to six weeks. I'm just curious, curious your thoughts on that.
So we were trying to do that mostly to, well, this is something that we really don't want families to do because we want their kids to come to school. And at the same time, we're trying to be really respectful of families' decisions, especially around holidays and their plans and concern about rising cases. So we, we settled on kind of a six-week period because we thought it would get us through the holidays. And Kristin, I think we've had three or four families take advantage of this already or assign it already. Yeah. What were you thinking, Leslie, in terms of a timeframe?
You all will remember that last time we talked about this, I was on the struggle bus and I kind of remained there to some degree. And I'll just, I'm not going to stand in the way because I know, I understand the practical reality of this. Just feel like every month that goes by, we have more data that shows how safe schools are. And I, it's not perfect. It's not like you send them there and they're in a safe bubble. So I don't really have like an alternative to six weeks. I think that makes some sense given the Thanksgiving, Christmas, and you know, what other institutions of higher education are forced into. So I mean, I don't know that I have an alternative. I think I'm just airing the struggle.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if it'll help, but I can tell you what my thought process in this is that I sort of traveled down each alternative road to see where it would bring us. You know, so when you travel down the road of having people actually have to withdraw and declare homeschooling and then come back after, that's not a great road to go down. That's not what we want. If the kids would return their devices, we'd have to, you know, pull them out, put them back in, you know, they would lose connection with their classes. We really don't want to do that. The other road that we would travel down is the idea of truancy because they would technically be truant. And as we've mentioned, the whole point of truancy is to get kids to come to school. So, so if we go down that road, this is what we want, although there really are some families that are going to do this no matter what. And that's what we're faced with is trying to make this a situation where we recognize that that's going to happen, but we want these families and kids to stay as connected as possible to GVS in the meantime. And, and I agree with you in, in terms of the, the struggle. I really struggled with what this would look like in, in traveling down all those roads. And I think I could chalk this up to many things about this pandemic experience is that there's no great road. I think this is the best road we can take.
My question on this, though, if they do have the option of asking for an emergency switch to remote learning, right?
Well, what we've said is if they're making a switch in their instructional model, they fill out a request form. If, if they're not just doing this temporary exemption, if they're saying, for example, I'm choosing to go remote for the rest of the year, they would fill out our change of instructional model form. And we would get back to them with it, within, I think the form says somewhere around anywhere from two to four weeks, we would make some kind of a change just to make sure that they were set up properly. And this would be really just a very temporary exception.
But they can do remote during this time or no?
No. We still have students who will be continuing to do work if they're, if we've, if they have to quarantine. You know, if they have to be isolated, if they have to quarantine, if they've been identified as close contact. This is specifically for, for families who do not have a specific public health reason to do this on a temporary basis. They're just choosing to do this around the holidays. This is the, their avenue.
And it does encourage families to stay connected through Wednesdays or to check for assignments that might be there, but it doesn't put the onus on teachers to provide the materials.
Right.
So it puts the, it puts the responsibility on the families to check into those places to see if there are materials available to stay connected to. And that, you know, that's just a, we hope you well.
Right.
Sydney or Kristin, I'm looking at the, you know, the letter again, and do we have to be specific about what dates or can this be? I mean, it doesn't even say the December holidays. And could a parent say holiday, I'm, I'm taking, I don't know, Valentine's Day in six weeks?
They could actually if, if, as long as this policy addendum is in place, they could do that. And I suppose that's possible if, if for some reason by that time cases are worse and we're still open and somebody's feeling more uncomfortable. Or if they have something else going on in their, in their specific household that would cause them to want to make this decision.
So we should intentionally keep them non-specified as the dates.
Yeah.
It's the six-week period.
Yeah. And we are hoping that families opt for less than six weeks.
I, I hope so too.
You said a few families have already requested this. Have any of them said this isn't enough time, six weeks?
I don't know. Have you heard that, Kristin?
I haven't. In fact, the people who have filled it out, it's all less than six weeks. It's a couple of weeks that they're filling it out for.
Okay, unless there's further discussion, we'll need a motion to, a motion for second reading and adoption of the temporary addendum to policy JH.
And Jody, I'm not sure if I answered your question enough.
Yeah, no, you did. I'm, I'm wondering though, as, as I'm sitting here thinking, is if we should have this back on the agenda soon if it does pass tonight? Um, the first thing that comes to my mind is will people take advantage of this to make it early summer? If things are better and it's still on the table. I mean, I, I know that's cynical of me to think, but I'm worried. So I'm wondering if we should look at it again, maybe later on if it does pass this evening?
I've had that thought too as well, Jody, which was where my question about, like the, the, if we would need to rescind it once it's in place. And I think if we, if we should, I think we should also revisit it and look at the impact that it might have if at some point we have to change our instructional model. So if at some point we are in a position where we have to make a, a choice to go remote for a longer period of time, would this still be necessary and apply? You know, what would the impact of that be? I think anytime we make a change to our instructional model or anytime we are coming up on, you know, something like a big change or a, you know, a semester break or the end of the school year, just remembering to look at this again. That we have this out there, I think that would be a good idea for us as a board.
I'll add it to the April agenda for now. I'm just thinking March, we usually don't have a regular meeting and February would be too soon. Okay.
Might it become an issue before then?
So far, it's very few people who have taken advantage of it. So I can bring it back to you if we feel that it is becoming a problem. But right now it is very sparse.
But, but we have to have something in place so that these students aren't considered truant. Yeah.
It occurred to me that there's February and April vacations and if, you know, especially by April, if things get better, families might want more extended
Get out of town.
Time in April.
Yeah. Well, there, we still have another mechanism in place, which is we still have a vacation request. So families can still request up to five days of vacation, get work in advance. And there are some families who have already requested that, I believe. Right, Kristin?
I haven't seen a vacation request in a while.
So it's, it's probably somebody who talked to me for the future, but you know, that's, that's also a different thing. That's something that has been in place. This is, this is very specifically, it's not like we're going on a family vacation or it's not like we're extending our April break or anything like that. This is very specifically, I'm just pulling out, pulling my kid out of school for a while because of COVID.
Um, I think I, I might propose, I'm curious how the other board members feel. I think I might feel better if it was four weeks. I know it's just like splitting hairs maybe. But six weeks, like if someone chooses that long, I, I, I'm torn between like our authority, your authority, Sydney and Kristin as like the, you know, the people who are running the school, but that just seems like, I don't know, I'm having a really hard time with that chunk of time. Like you said, maybe no one will do it. But for me, this addendum, like conveying our val- our values, I don't know, that's probably not the right word. But there's something there that I'm struggling with. So I think I might feel better if it was four weeks, but I would defer to the board if anyone else, maybe no one else feels the way I feel.
I just looked at my calendar and if somebody wanted to take from Thanksgiving week through New Year's, it's six weeks.
Yeah. Because it's inclusive of vacation time.
So, and when I read this and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sydney, it's cumulative six weeks. So potentially it could be, I'm taking two weeks now, but then my other child's coming home from college in March or whatever. So I want my younger kid to have two weeks then because of the quarantine. So it's a cumulative amount of time versus not necessarily six weeks straight.
Right. But we've also, we, our early expectation was that it would be this Thanksgiving through holiday break time.
I might have missed part of that, but my question is also, is that six weeks including vacation time?
It is.
With the sleeve? So could potentially this happen at another time where it would be six weeks of instructional time? With no vacation on the calendar?
It could be. Yes, the way it's written.
Okay, so. Yeah, Leslie, I, I, I feel better about four weeks than six for the same concerns.
If the intention of it was coming from that, like Christine referenced that Thanksgiving to New Year's six-week stretch, does it make sense to I leave it at six weeks for now and then revisit it? Is it, should we revisit? Is it, should we revisit it in February or I'm trying to think, or January at our next meeting or?
Kristen, have people um started with this this week? Like has the clock started ticking? Yeah.
Yeah, some people started with this week. I think three.
They requested two weeks, Kristen?
Um two of them requested two weeks. One, I think did two weeks, but then anticipates doing longer.
But there's only three weeks till break. They don't have to count the break, correct?
They do have to count the break.
They do have to count the break.
And if I'm remembering correctly, at least two of those are not, it has nothing to do with travel or quarantining or it's just they're feeling very uncomfortable with where the numbers are.
Yeah.
And they're choosing to do this, take their kids out of school rather than go to remote learning.
Well, I think it's because they feel that this is temporary. Um this is, this is an increased anxiety about case transmission with holiday gatherings and holiday travel.
And there isn't, we don't have a remote learning option where they would still be with their class.
Yeah.
So if they picked remote learning, it would mean changing to either V-Lax or Accelerate. I think my, uh, my, what I'm leaning towards personally is with, if the intention of it came from covering that Thanksgiving to New Year's, six week stretch. Um and knowing that we do have a couple of families that have taken, expressed interest or taken advantage of it with what was presented originally. Um I think my my preference would be to leave it as is and then know that this is a temporary addendum that we could revisit. If at some point Kristen or Sydney was bringing us, you know, input, input or feedback that they felt like there was starting to be some significant, you know, either they were feeling like it, it was no longer working or it was no longer necessary, or there was a significant uptick. Um and we would need to look at what that would mean. You know, that we might need to change something in a different area to meet that need.
Right. I mean, if we suddenly have a hundred of these requests come in.
Right.
There might be other decisions we make.
Yeah, you might want to just go remote.
Could we, it's probably separate from voting on this particular addendum, but I would advocate that we could return to it either in January. I mean, I would like to return to it in January because Brittany, I don't, I don't disagree with you. My real struggle is sort of like the um I can't think of a better word than optics, but I was talking about like our values or how we're, uh, we as a collective body kind of, you know, demonstrate our values. I don't know how else to say it. And so while I agree with you and I see that we're kind of in a position where we really, we probably should just approve as is because we already have some people in process, but I would advocate sooner rather than later, we, because I'm not even, I don't think we're gonna have a hundred people abusing it. It's for me, it's much more of like a living document. That's a reflection of our value of our school and our kids being in school.
Well, I'm just thinking about families that are feeling very stressed and perhaps very much at risk and you know, it's a struggle for them to make these decisions as well. So I guess I'm saying, I don't want to come town too hard on families.
Yeah, and I, I know from talking to at least three of the families, I think I talked to five total so far, but I three of the families who were planning on doing this around the holidays. Um they were in favor of a temporary option because they do believe in their kids being in school. Um they really didn't want to go totally remote, but it was just this holiday time with um various travel and gatherings and increasing cases that it's just something that they feel they have to do for now. Um I don't think it's a reflection on their um not believing that kids should be in school because I think their intention is that they want their kids to go back as soon as they feel this period's over.
Well, and I think if, if we're responding to that need, um potentially that could be even greater of a concern for folks from that Christmas, you know, after that, you know, in that stretch, which is, you know, Christmas to New Year's is clearly we're on, you know, kids are out of school. Um but it would be inclusive of that time, which I think is, you know, a, a good message to recognize to families that, that, that there's heightened concern for them in, in that area, you know, that for, for safety. Okay, so we would need a motion to um we would need a motion to approve the um, a motion for second reading and adoption of the temporary addendum to policy J H. Unless there's further discussion of that.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion from Christine and we need a second.
I can.
A second from Jody. Okay, if you're in favor, um please say aye and we'll do a roll call. If you're opposed, please say nay. Christine?
I.
Denise?
Nay.
Leslie?
I.
Jody?
I.
And Brittany, aye. All right. And so the motion passes and I do agree and I think we should revisit it. I think it, maybe it's worth it for us to just revisit this policy regularly, monthly at our meetings, as long as it's in place until we either feel like we need to amend the addendum or um rescind it. So. Um, all right. So that takes us to the principals report. And anything else you'd like to share with us, Kristen?
Yeah, so I had a um few other things I just wanted to share. One that um I can't share any names right now because it's not totally, totally um done, but we have hired a long-term sub. So we're super excited about that. Um, yeah, cheer, right. Um and then I've had a couple of interviews and um, one today, one Thursday for um daily subs, so that's exciting too. Then the last thing I wanted to share is that in the last year or two, I don't know if it's been two years or just one year, we've been doing um a star math assessment in the primary grades. And this year we have taken it on and done early literacy as well. And the kindergarten, first grade and part of second grade have um taken those assessments in the last um couple of weeks. And I want to share how excited everyone is about the data that we're getting from it because it is um it's just really clear data that's gonna help drive instruction and intervention. And Kathy Buckley, um the reading specialist is like over the moon excited about what she's able to do and how she's able to group and really find out what the needs of our students are. So um that was really exciting and I wanted to share that with you. And that's all I have.
I had a question. I don't see anything from Scott. Is all well?
Scott was um, he took a few vacation days and unfortunately I forgot to ask him for his principal report before he took his or his um report before his vacation days.
Any other questions or comments for Kristen? All right. Thank you. All right. And so our next agenda item is the superintendent's report.
Um I'm just gonna submit my report as written. Um I think we've talked about just about everything that was in there, except I will uh since we love talking about learning and not COVID, um I will just hop on what Kristen said to talk about how you'll be hearing a lot more from us about an MTSS, a multi-tiered system of support that I started to describe to you um in the board report. And so we'll have a little bit more of a formal presentation to you about where we are with that. It's in its early stages, obviously, with um a lot of different pieces that are involved, but it's been really exciting to think about. And I think um having this kind of organized approach of an MTSS. And of course, that's the next acronym that we'll all be getting used to talking about, the MTSS. Um is really what GBS needs. Um so you know, GBS is obviously a, a school with um pretty high academic excellence. Um and while, while we are in great shape, we do have certain really clearly identified areas where we know we need to improve. And this is the kind of system that's really gonna help us get there. And at the same time, being inclusive of the social emotional learning goals that we've worked really hard on um this year, and especially uh Mrs. Buckman leading the charge in that in terms of really looking at social emotional learning uh programming and goals and curriculum and developmental stages. So you know, we're doing, even though the majority of what we talk about a lot is, do we have enough people for all of our classes every day? And we talk a lot about health and safety. I did want to let you know that we are still having some really great and exciting and important conversations about learning. Um and we love those.
Sydney, I have a question for you about buses.
Yes.
And bus, and bus capacity. How, how, how's our bus capacity?
Well, the thanks to, uh, I can say that we have once again um done the jigsaw puzzle and managed to fit everybody and accommodate everybody on buses, but the thanks for that really needs to go to Brenda Malloy and to um and to Donna Abear, who have really just done an incredible job of looking at seating charts and looking at our surveys that came out. Um I don't think it's the favorite thing that either one of them has ever done. Um but basically we reached out to families to really get them to confirm that students were gonna ride the bus because we had quite a few parents who had signed up for a seat on the bus and had never util- utilized it. Oh, and Brenda just wrote in that they love doing it, so. We know you do, Brenda. But um we really had to ask people, you know, saying that there was actually a queue, there was a waiting list starting that if you really weren't accessing the bus, if you were just sort of holding a seat, that we wouldn't be able to let you do that anymore. So through that and through communicating with families that if they're podding with somebody else or if they have a neighbor that they regularly have contact with, and if they're both on the bus, can they sit together? Which actually, you know, opened up other seats. Um as long as both families were agreeable, then we could um group those students in the seats. So so Brenda and Donna really did an amazing job with that and it, it wasn't easy. Um, just a little side kind of funny story, but maybe not funny for the parents who were involved, but some of the toughest seating arrangements we had were siblings who absolutely could not sit on the bus together. Because there was just too much arguing. Um but we, we still were able to make it work. Because of course we all assumed, well, of course siblings can sit together, but there really were some combinations that just don't work out well.
That's good news. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Brenda and Donna.
Yep, another.
Other questions for Sydney? Um Kristen, I actually did have a question for you that I totally, I had written on the bottom of my paper and I forgot. Um you had mentioned before about um both staff and student absences. Have we seen an increase in those?
Depends on the day, to be honest with you, or the, a couple of days mixed together. There have been apps, a lot of absences in staff that we've had to juggle and, and move people around. Um the last two days, there've been very high absences for students. I think yesterday was a twenty-eight, Sydney.
Twenty-nine.
Nine.
Yeah.
Um and today was in the twenties as well, twenty-five maybe.
Yeah.
So definitely some high absences, some due to sickness, um some due to everyone's quote now, the abundance of caution. Um you know, most of them are just signs of the common cold or, or whatnot, but protocol says they, they need to stay out and get tested, so.
Karen Islander said yesterday, she sent um sixteen students for COVID testing because of being symptomatic. She had, I believe, when I checked in with her today, I think she had gotten either six or eight negative back so far and was just waiting for the results of, of the rest. But, but either way, you know, we have to send people to get tested. We, we understand that it's not the greatest thing in the world, but our families for um really the vast majority of families have just been very understanding about it, that this is just something that we need to do to keep our community safe. And we've been doing a good job at it. So thank you very much to everybody who's been so cooperative.
So appreciate the honesty.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
And I know that there's for some of the students who are out for, in some circumstances, those teachers are then providing materials for those kids to be able to learn remotely.
Yeah.
Has there been an increase? I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of is, do we have a, teachers who are back in that position of having to wear both hats of teaching an in-person group of students and also put plans together for students to be learning remotely? And are we seeing an increase in that? Because I feel like I'm picturing our teachers are kind of on this roller coaster of, we had them on this track where they had to do remote. They were doing hybrid, they had to do remote and in-person. And then for just a little while, they were only doing in-person. And then I'm wondering if they're back to having some of them are back to having to do, wear both of those hats.
So um in a sense, they're wearing both hats, but the remote hat isn't a full hat. It's, it's quite the education that they would have got if it were fully remote. And to be honest with you, if, if I'm allowed to invite Leanna to, to say something, she recently went through this as a teacher. Um kind of putting on both hats. So I don't know if you want to explain how you did it, Leanna?
Yeah, so it's not an ideal situation and we're definitely, um at least in my situation, I was definitely um teaching kids online at the same time as in the building. Um, I think, I have to think families have been super understanding that response time is not as quick as it would be if we were fully remote or fully in with no one remote. And really what we've been doing is putting our plans up with as many materials as possible. Um and families have really stepped up to help us out, which is amazing. And also the paraprofessionals. Um I think, you know, the pairs who are involved in third grade have been using special time to meet with parent, with uh, not parents with uh children and things like that. So to answer your question, yeah, we are some, some of us are back in that position. But we're, you know, we make it work as a team.
And I, I think Brittany, one of the things that we are always looking at is, is there a tipping point for any particular classroom or grade where so many kids are quarantined that it would actually be better to temporarily do remote instruction? Um and we're always keeping an eye out for that. I don't think we have reached that point in any greater classroom at this point. We may, but at this point, not yet.
Mm-hmm. And I should say the vast majority have been just for a couple of days. So it's not like overall long, like you might have different kids over a long term, but most of the situations have just been, hey, we have a couple of days where we need to, you know, pull it all together. So.
And I'll say the, we have had a couple that are more, are like the two week more long-term. Um and cliche, it really does take a village, like Brantham Village School is pretty amazing. I you know, Mr. Beechey was, was reading with kids every once in a while and Mrs. Wallace was working with kids when that weren't necessarily on her caseload. Um just to give him more one-on-one attention. I did some with kids. So everyone kind of jumps in when they have time to help out that child and that classroom teacher, which is pretty cool. Um we have a pretty special building.
And again, Kristen, just to give a shout out to the parents, I think they've it's different than when we were hybrid, right? Um they understand there's not as much teacher support available during the day, so they're helping their kids just as much as I'm sure they were. Um but they're really understanding about it, which is wonderful. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, Leanna.
Right, thank you. All right. Any other questions or things from the board for um Sydney or for Kristen? All right. Okay, so our next agenda item is the consent agenda. So any, um, changes or questions or edits on the consent agenda?
Um, just a couple places in the minutes. Again, it referred to the twenty-twenty-one budget rather than the twenty-one-twenty-two budget. On the first page of the minutes. And let's see, yeah, they're both on the first page of the minutes.
We'll make sure we amend that. So like we're stuck in this year?
Yeah. I had that thought on your.
It will be all.
On your superintendent report, when you said it was your last one of the year, I was like, I, I, so I don't trust that. I don't trust that this year is going to give up. Any other changes for the consent agenda? Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
We have a motion from Leslie and we need a second.
Second.
A second from Denise. And so we'll need a roll call to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye and any opposed say nay. Christine?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
And Brittany, aye. All right. And I don't believe we have cause to need a non-public tonight. I'm going to look and see, Sydney's shaking her head.
No non-public tonight.
No non-public. All right. Our next board meeting is January fifth. Um, and we will plan to still have it, um, remote and there will be information for how to log into that posted. And also tentatively, um, there is a public hearing for the area agreement on December seventeenth at five thirty. So if folks are interested in joining that, we'll put information out for how to join, um, that Zoom as well. Um, any other comments or questions at this point from anyone on the board?
Just, just on that last point, um, when we were discussing this, we, you know, last year was Grantham's turn, you know, we take turns with everything. And so we decided just to stick with turns and this year is Lebanon's turn. So they'll be handling the whole public hearing on the seventeenth. Okay, so the information will all be coming from them and it'll be posted in the Valley News.
That sounds delightful.
It does, doesn't it?
I enjoy not.
It's good to share.
I like, yes, I like to share that. So other people can have fun with that. All right. Any other things to?
I have a question. Um, we haven't had to sign any documents in quite some time. Will there be some coming?
So we had some at the last meeting, Denise, when you were, um, when you were remote. Um, and so we are looking at, will those documents be, and Karen, feel free to jump in and correct me, will they, um, some things will be coming through, um, through the DocuSign process now?
Right. Yep, they're ready and Brenda will be sending those out.
Okay, thank you.
And the credit card, the P-card statements in there as well, Jody. So you'll see that in anybody else who's interested in it.
Thanks for that question, Denise. All right. Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion from Christine and we'll need a second.
Second.
We have a second from Leslie and all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. We'll roll call. Christine?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
And Brittany, aye. And so the meeting is adjourned at nine oh five. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Good night.
You.